My clock says 5:01, so. For the legal counsel to the flag of the United States of America, treated repudably for which it spans one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Warren, you see the use.
Yes, sir. Well, freeze on here, mainly to question or contest the bid of our competitor last Friday, since apparently they did not have a bid bond with the bid. And did the advertisement and bid specifications correctly say that bid document must be submitted with all the documents or be rejected? So, that's why I'm here.
Well, legal counsel, what say ye?
So, no bids have been accepted. Those bids were just opened at a public meeting.
Yeah.
But I concur with that opinion, though. If they didn't meet the bid requirement for the bid bond, then we can't accept the bid.
Well.
But I think that was the purpose of this meeting tonight. Well, one of them was to possibly consider bids, though. Like I said, the board hasn't formally accepted anything to this point.
Well, they had to be in by.
The cutoff date, yeah.
And since there was two, the ones disqualified are still, they don't have one.
One bid, correct.
Yeah. And you all, we don't have to wait until, I kind of put that down in next legal counsel report further down, but I announced Warren, if he wanted to be president, he was welcome to, and he can figure out by. So you all have a copy of what the engineer put together as far as his proposal. He's documented those items under each DC Construction of Wabash Valley Asphalt. The items in red there were, of course, he's got it marked as color code of least value. DC Construction did not attach a bid bond as the bid specs specifically stated. And then there's a few other items that the engineer had noticed. There weren't really strong things, but were within what he would call his middle range of coding errors. So there are those two proposals, but upon the engineer's recommendation, which does make a recommendation to the council, to approve the bid from Wabash Valley Asphalt.
Will we do that tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Hold on.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need more?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have good evening.
Bye, Warren. Thank you.
You ready, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Item number one is completed. Item number two, I told you I wouldn't do anything with this until we heard something back. I still haven't heard anything back from Davenport and Dana on the boom lift. But we feel like, let's go ahead and get the engine fixed on that old truck. I feel like we can get it up high enough where we can put the arms up this time for safely. And we'll go from there. So I have that for your consideration. Do you want to do these individually? Doesn't matter. You tell me. You want me to just run through the list and then have you guys pick and choose, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number three, streetlight order for the electric department. Twenty-five LED streetlights from Anexter at 341 piece, that's 8,525. Item number four is a transfer, I'm sorry, transformer order. These are actually two banks of three, so a total of six at 9:15 apiece. That's 5,490 per Solomon. One of those banks is to go up over by the post office in the, ah, second one. This gets me right now.
So what, 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 we're just replacing? Do we have bad?
Yes, replacing bad. They've got a lot of age on them when we did pole replacements, we want to set new replacements.
So we're doing pole replacements plus those?
Yes.
That's nice.
One thing I didn't know, but I've been told is, a lot of times when you're doing sets, a newer bank, it's usually good to get them really close in terms of amperage. So you don't have a mismatched set. So that's something I learned. Item number five, this one I have a little bit of question about, and maybe we'll save it to the end because I'm kind of up on the air at it. But I'll give you a little bit of information now. The water order that we conducted asked for basically what our expenses are in producing water. And even though we have an estimate of what our power usage is at the water plant, it's not been metered, and it's just kind of that. It's an estimate. We looked into what it would cost us to put a meter at the water plant to be able to track those costs more accurately. And it was a lot higher than what I thought. It was 8,000 bucks per primary meter on that. Honestly, I'm kind of up in the air on it.
So this will measure what, what, for all the flow?
This will measure the amount of electricity that we use to run wells and pump house.
How are we building that?
But I think it's based on estimate of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's the estimated percentage of what the town uses. For example, a lot of our streetlights aren't metered and everything. It's just, it goes into a big titty that the town pays and stuff.
Well, I don't, I guess I'm not following you as far as, what are you talking about as far as billing goes?
How much do we charge the water plant for utilities? What is that based on?
I'll have to look up. I didn't tell you how to, I'll have to look up water utilities.
I mean, I know what we're appropriated for. Again, it's a value, but I'm not sure exactly where that number comes from. I think, the way I understand it, is it's an estimate, but again, we just, we don't have a good.
Well, we have six pumps. I only have, we have six pumps out there?
Yeah, six well pumps, you know, five well pumps, and you have your high-speed service pumps inside your pump house. And we have a lot, a lot of use.
I would imagine so. Well, that's one reason why I started questioning the expense for the year, because there were some issues there, I think. Remember, Randy, we talked about that. I think maybe so, that this, between sewer and water.
Right.
But, well, you know, guys, we, we should know what we're spending out there, I think. It takes $8,000 to meter a darn thing, and it probably meters last.
Ten years, fifteen years. But I think if you recalibrate some of your bigger use, three phase meters periodically, probably get a point of life out of it. So again, I'm kind of up in the air either way. My guess is, you know, I don't have a sound basis.
So we don't have a meter at? Wow. Okay, sounds old school, but we.
I'll come make my back for the ten.
Oh, sure, I went up and saw.
You went off the internet and hear that we're selling them to you?
Yeah.
We should probably do that. I'm surprised that's not been called out before. We should probably do that.
Is that a labor cost and material cost, or is that just material cost?
Everything that it takes to produce the water. So, yeah, your labor costs are involved in that, you know, and your chemical cost. Basically, it's everything on your appropriation, but.
No, I'm referring to the $8,100 for the command extra.
That's probably just meter, just meter installation.
Yeah.
Can we install?
Yeah, I think so. We should be able to. If we install that. I think we'll be able to do that.
Have we received, Randy, we received the money back from our, our material fund if we get?
They're still editing our proposed changes to the contract.
Oh, okay, so we're just going to track negotiations.
We're in negotiations. They said they had some additional changes they wanted to make to what I made, so I'm waiting for that to come back.
Okay.
That is, that is for us to install. That's the actual meter.
Well, yeah, I just think we should know what we're spending out there. What about sewer plant? We need you down there.
Good question.
Do you want me to check in with some of these things before you?
That would probably, because I think in the long run, it's probably going to be a wash, but like I said, I just don't have a strong opinion on the sewer plant.
For the cost in the past, yeah, it sounds like we're shooting from the.
Here for water and wastewater?
Yeah. Okay, we'll kind of put that on.
Let's put that one back for another day. Just as a FYI, this is not for approval, but we did get the transformer sort of for New Hope, and it came out to about 14,000. So we'll be getting a bill for that if we forward to New Hope for reimbursement. I'm sorry, it was 17,290. There'll be some shipping on that also. So that one's on order. Any sense, and we met with him over here the other day, reference our water loss. He suggested, even though we put in a new flow meter on both of our high-speed service pumps last year. He said that ideally, when those are calibrated at the factory, they're calibrated in a, in a factory, which is straight lines and no bends or no curves or anything in the line, which will affect your flow. He said that he seen up to a 20% reduction just in recalibration of the meters. So his suggestion to us was, let's test the meter, let's get it calibrated so we know it's exact. And then we can start working on some other areas where we know. Finding out exactly what we pump from the pump house to the town is really going to be more telling than doing a lot of these surveys at this point. So there's two prices on that. One of them is $2,150, and then $1,050 if we schedule it while there's other testing going on up here. They do a lot of meter calibration for Terre Haute, some other local municipalities. So the difference in the $1,000 is basically a single crew call out. So that's a thought there. So for approval, I guess I have number two, number three, number four. Number five, we put on hold. Number six is Nettwaite High, and number seven is up for approval.
I'll move to approve those.
And do you all want to choose?
Yeah, we outdo the two, obviously, yeah.
Is that a second?
Sure.
Hold on, babe.
Say, Jeff, being that Jeff's in New York, I noticed last night the lights out there. I, I texted you last night, I want to see today, so I don't know if you know.
I know they were out on several this morning. Item number eight, trying to get a date for spring cleanup. I think May 15th was corresponding from last year. Sent that out to you guys, but we, there was some discussion about having it the same day as talks away day. So if we can get a date set up for that, that would be cool, and then we can make arrangements for the downstairs to get it advertised and stuff. Sheriff Malone also approached me the other day and suggested that the township would like to have a shredding box, a document shredding box available for public use. And she said that the township would provide that service and we can pay for it. And I said, I certainly didn't have a problem with it, but thank you guys, and I think it's nice service. Bring us good. Does anybody have an issue with it?
Township's going to manage that, clean that, shred that, take care of all of it then?
It's just, they're going to have a truck there from this company. Documents go in the truck, truck drives off, takes and shreds them.
And they're paying for that?
Yes. And that is all I have on my agenda for this evening.
Is that for talks away day or cleanup day?
Well, that's the thing. I'm not sure what day the talks away day is. Do you want to do it concurrently with that day?
Talks away is right there.
This is the electronic day?
Yeah.
What day is that scheduled for? So it's a bit later?
I assume it's 15 AM.
Definitely bring us some of that cemetery stuff we talked about.
Uh, yeah. So you guys are good with May 15th, this talks away day? Have our cemetery board meeting today, and I'll lean on you a little bit, Mark, too. Discussions have, there were a lot of policy revisions and ordinances that were proposed or whatever back in 2018. I think it's when the year that they've done this. And somehow in the transition, it didn't make its way into actual practice.
We're still hanging out to this, and this is outdated.
Yeah.
It's outdated. There's some hard days after holiday of removal of decorations. I think even some of the fees in here are incorrect. This day is printed.
2005.
Yeah. Yeah, December 05. So it, the recommendation is, is we put, hand it this out, we're done with it, put in the archives, and they're all relevant. And then just use a printed copy of what we currently have as regulations through the cemetery, which they went through Janet and Carla, who spent a lot of time with them. And all the ordinances incorporated, and the updated fees. And it's been, I think everything's been approved, and it's in this. It's just not only the proof of a document. Exactly.
Yeah, yep.
And so, yeah, we need to do that. I don't know where these are kept, but we need to quit giving them to them. And, and give out a copy just of what we, the board thought. It doesn't make any sense, because of the expense of printing out one of those things. Just print out paper, paper.
We'll put it on our website, and also do the handouts.
The, this has red text in here that shows what was changed and updated as per ordinances, so. I'm not trying, I know I have a copy of this, and Carla has a copy. Apparently, the one time Zip Drive gave someone up here, and we're not sure where that's at, but we have copies of it, we go forward it to whoever, and get this, it were documented. It's, it wasn't were documented. And that's what we need now.
I know the cost is prohibitive for the computer program, and we're working on bringing that to the cemetery.
Interesting thought. We brought that up today, and it's probably going to talk to Randy here once we get a better idea of what we, or want. And I think I had an original quoted about 13K, something like that for software. We want to revisit that. And even though we don't have money in appropriation, we'd like to get a good firm estimate, and then maybe work with Randy on seeing if we can get an additional appropriation fund that. I don't know if it's possible or not, but we'll have that discussion. So it's, it's back on the, on the table a little bit. I think, just been looking at it, the cemetery fund is pretty healthy, so, but like Randy mentioned before, even though that's money, that money is there. DLGF does not have to automatically, you have to make a pretty strong case, I think, to be able to get those, state to release those funds, so.
Hey, you want to talk about the outside service?
Yes. We also have $5,000 for outside services. In the past, we've used graveyard gravers. We intend to do that again, but not this year. We're going to take, we'd like to use the $5,000 to finish up tree removal at the old cemetery and new cemetery. That's, that's our, that's our plan for 2021. 2022, we would like to use that money to replant trees in cemetery, the old cemetery and the new cemetery, to replace the ones we've lost. And then in 2023, go back to graveyard gravers again, and start all that and make it stop running. That's kind of what we talked about today. Did I forget everything?
I think so. As far as this document, Randy, since you're kind of the keeper of the records, I should probably send you a copy of this, and we'll go over it and get the red text out, make sure we got it all good to go. Then I, who, it's probably Mark Hancis' file.
I don't, I don't have any of those unless there's something in what I call the state, but I've not seen any of those floating around the office or where we distribute them.
Well, when they buy a plot, I would assume they would probably get one of these.
And maybe since he's kind of handling all of that other real funds, but I will check the state for Zip Drive. There could be one label.
Yeah, you may have it. Mark may have. No, we really aren't sure where it could be. But yeah, okay. So I'll get a view on that later. So that's all we have in the cemetery.
Well, Thursday. Yeah, we sat down and kind of discussed some of the things that we were approaching about. Just see what happens. Are you ready, Randy?
I am. Hey, you show planes in the amount of 251-7225. Should be a register attached with those.
Yeah, I had a question on the, the outside service for sewer. We paid Glitco to do some pumping and hauling, and that was outside a sludge removal?
Yeah, that was when we had the issue with the diffusers out there.
Yeah.
Regap project.
Yeah.
They got down there, they had about three foot of sludge in the bottom of them.
Right.
And that was outside the scope of the grant, so that's when we approved that.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about it, so that, yeah, that's expensive hauling.
That hadn't been done for almost 10 years.
Wow. Yeah, it's $21,300. Now, sludge is $40,000. I think we ran 42 last year, but. Yeah, that's, that's unfortunate, but reality. I think that's all I had. I'll move to approve.
Second. Hold on, babe.
Aye.
I just have billing adjustments made out of 16683. There's just a few, um, leak adjustments on that one.
Hold on, babe.
Two resolutions. One is completed for the CARES Act funding to move that money to the general fund. When we received those funds, it had to be set up a new fund called the CARES Act, and received in there, we've since then made the approval to move that to the general fund to help out with the public safety. So I do have the resolution 2021-03 to move the CARES money to the general fund to be approved.
I'll move to approve that.
Hold on, babe.
So that's going up to general, I saw you have the, well, the appropriation, yeah, you have the police general, fire general setup.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I'll be moving that. It's $81,077, I believe.
So.
You won't see those on the report yet, but.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm with you, boy.
Well, you'll, on the fund report, you're still going to see the CARES Act as a separate fund.
Right, right.
But that money will be moved then to the general fund.
Well, I guess, okay, one that might.
It's not appropriated.
Right.
But, yes. And then I also have a resolution 2021-04 that is a credit card one.
What one?
A credit card. There, there has always been one.
Yeah, it's the same Walmart, same.
It's a Sam's.
Yeah.
Card. When doing the end of the year reports, you're supposed to upload your resolution from your credit card. There may have been a resolution for a credit card. I could not locate one. So I got with Nick, and I have a resolution for the use of the credit card.
I mean, with DLGF, we're supposed to upload or some?
Yeah, when you're doing your report, there's a specific one that asks if you use a credit card, and if you say yes.
I think 2012 was when.
2012? And I'll do some looking to see if I can find something back. I just couldn't locate the resolution for it.
Need a motion?
So I prepared a new one, yes.
Hold on, babe.
Got that one. I did get the banks, the February banks are balanced. They're all here. They're all paper clipped. I don't have each of them tagged, but if I could get an approval on February banks as well.
I'll move on to bank.
Hold on, babe.
Just to refresh my memory, what is motor vehicle restricted? What are the?
When we get money received in, a portion of half, 50%, it's supposed to go into our MBH, and then the other 50% is going into the restrictive fund. At some point, I think I have, I think I got something that.
Why do we use that?
Because they told us that we have to.
What's a restricted form? What's, what, what are we allowed to use it for?
The restrictive fund, you can use for your street repairs and projects. It is split from your MBH or CPAP from when you receive the money from the audit of the state. The DLGF states that you have to set up a restrictive fund. I think that was in 2019 was when they required that. So it's just an additional that you can use for repairs and projects.
They're trying to force you to save some, so you have money to match your property community costs and something.
Yeah, you're just in your regular MBH, of course, there's the street paving, curb, street signs, and salaries, that states that you can pay out of that one, that you can't pay out of restricted.
That's a good idea.
Hey, Brandi, are we supposed to sign all of these?
Uh, yes, there's all of them. I'm sorry, I didn't flag them, because I forgot I had them in my folder already. And then I just, the only write-off question that I have is, I do have a deceased customer that does not have an estate. There was. There was a balance on their account, and they wrote a bad check. So I don't, if, if you wouldn't suggest that there's anything further that I can do, that I would ask.
Generally, I think the guidance I received, I think that's one of the guidance I received this far. But, I mean, probably asleep. Without estate, barring this filing estate, just because of that, it's going to be hard to do.
I don't know. I've got a, I've got a check amount for $360.22. $360.22.
Well, I don't think we're going to get it. I make a motion and write it off.
Second.
That actually saved me money in the long run, just when there's no estate, we have to actually file the estate to be able to go after it. That amount of money costs you more to file it than.
And the resolutions, I, that's just my, what we should remember.
You have a resolution still ordered?
I'm working on it.
Oh, okay. I saw your list. What, what about the?
We are working.
What about resolutions? So see, we still have that, the Howard Street, still has that balance of two quarters.
Yes, that was Howard. I think you guys did that in a meeting, right?
203-363, yeah. Have we already done that?
No, I don't think I have a resolution for that one yet.
Oh, we do need one.
I'll add it to my list. And that was in the fund. I know I should.
She got some of the resolutions on her own.
Okay.
And she shoots them in. Kind of depends on what they are.
That would be the Howard local money.
Howard locally, yes.
To move to...
Well, we thought we marked it. Well, we haven't, though. You have to go back to utilities. You have to go back to our campaign.
That was one with split three ways? Four. I've got a note on that one, too. I think that's the one I was working with Melissa at State Department Accounts on, the original resolution to put the money there. And I can't find that. But as long as I have a new resolution going back with what the board and what we found in some documents, it was the one where the minutes were different. The total was the same, but I think there was a little discrepancy in the minutes. So that will go back to those four, and then those four will distribute to South Market, right?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Good. You ready, Nick?
Sure am. So, really easy one first. Jeff had asked about an ordinance establishing utility coordinate use rates. He'd given us at a previous meeting a breakdown of what he proposed per hour for the skid steer, backhoe, back machine, jet truck, dump truck, labor, damage utilities, small backhoe, small bucket truck, big bucket truck, bigger truck, trencher, and a one-hour minimum on all charges. So I've put together an ordinance establishing those rates, first thing today, same meeting. So if you're in agreement on those rates, then you have to move to approve. It has to be unanimous, and then actually signed to approve. No, the attachment I have there has been written on, but Randy has one that's a clean version that we can attach to it, so.
I'll second.
On paper?
You're going to sign twice each of you then? Yeah, up here for same day, same meeting, then down here on approve or reject. The other thing I have is a rough draft of an interlocal cooperation agreement as to the Howard... Eric, not Howard, 41 North Seer project. You might remember, we did a similar one of these in the past. This one's just an updated one to allow for more resources. But as I understand it, it's been sent to council for the redevelopment commission. So we might want to wait till we see what he says before we execute one. What do you think, Sandy? It's the identical agreement we had last time, so we could be proactive and go ahead and execute it.
Could you give our permit... Or who, Harper gave permission to sign it at redevelopment?
You could.
Any changes? Because that, they meet next Tuesday night.
Right. And if there's anything that's a major change, you could always text me or call me, too. But you could give approval for that. That way, they have a chance to make any changes since I drafted it.
Make a motion?
I just did.
Second. On paper?
So that takes care of that. We received a tort claim notice. This came about two weeks ago, I think, or so, as to an A to B accident. This happened way outside of town limits, so, I mean, they're just... They're not going to... My guess is they're not going to file suit on the town, but even if they did, this, this...
Why would the town be a party?
So what some of these personal injury attorneys do is they just see an address. And so if the address came up Rockville, they notice the town of Rockville is a potential defendant. But if they actually file something on this, I think we should seek attorney fees for defending it since it's frivolous. But we played no role in the accident. It happened out near Valiant, so it wasn't anywhere near the town of Rockville. So, but this is a big law firm out of Bloomington, so.
Wasn't that driver responsible for his own?
Well, yes and no in some circumstances. Sometimes it gets complicated and very gray.
Would the attorneys get involved in this?
Right, yes. You're not wrong about that. But the good news is, we don't have anything to worry about here. And if they do file something, we'll be fine. Interconnection agreement. Jeff and I talked about this a little bit. I did get a chance to look at it, Jeff, but I wasn't certain. Is the town wanting to allow solar energy to be connected to our service?
Yeah, we had the first customer came online back in the fall, I think, over at the Strauss House. And we discussed that. And I think it's probably a good idea that we have an ordinance in place. And the one that we have there is the one that had been proposed by IMPA as kind of a sample. So I think we're probably in our best interest to do that. I think a lot of companies are out soliciting people in our area now. Because I get all kinds of requests from different companies about, you know, what's our fee structure, and what's this, and what's that? And so, yeah, I can see it as being something we'll probably deal with a lot more likely in the future.
Do they have to sell any extra back to us of that?
There's a agreement also that I have here from IMPA purchasing the excess back off of them.
You have to kind of have a two-way meter, the way I understand it. That meters what they actually take from our grid and then what they actually put back into the grid. And our software is compatible with that meter. We install it, it's compatible with our stuff. And then also, there are some restrictions about where they place their cutoff switch so that we don't get backfeed into our line if our guys are out working and they think that's a dead line. So it doesn't become energized through this secondary source. So, yeah, that's... I think it'd probably be a good idea to go ahead and get those ordinances in place and use those interlocal or those user agreements.
So I don't have any issue with the user agreements, but I'll have to draft an ordinance, though. I don't have an ordinance drafted on it. But I did review this at Jeff's request. There may be a couple just slight changes I might make to it, Jeff, but then I can pass it along to you, assuming the board's okay adopting it as their agreement. But I'll put together ordinance for our next meeting addressing the solar energy agreements and connections and things. But I just kind of wanted to make the board aware that Jeff and I have been working on this, so. The IMPA agreement, I talked about that a little bit more as far as the maintenance agreement. We should have that back from their attorney, probably within a week or so, would be my guess. I think I emailed that to him two weeks ago, and he responded last week and said he's going to make a few changes and send it back to me. But I haven't seen it since then. And then as far as the purchase agreement for the power, I think Randy told me they intend on coming to April meeting to talk to us about purchasing of power, is my understanding. So that's on hold currently. We had our date for Howard Avenue. Nobody appeared to object. We're going to have an order of quiet entitlement on that property. So now all three properties have had orders of quiet entitlement, so.
What are we going to do? We're going to advertise?
We're going to advertise for bids on the PAL property, is what I call it. But I haven't ran those advertisements yet, though. So that's the next step on that. Ordinance violations, the one that we had court on got continued because he's in jail. I told you at the last meeting, we haven't had court on any of those since then. So I did have a complaint about a new house on Erie Street. This is a house that we've had numerous complaints on in the past, but we cleaned up partially and then had an accident and had some things go on on it, so. I guess I'll talk to Randy about that and maybe we'll come up with a course of action on it. At one point, we were looking at possibly purchasing that residence, and so... But it's owned by a bank. It's a foreclosure property if they have foreclosed on, basically, which is fairly typical for banks because when the house is dilapidated, they foreclose their interest on it. Then they're responsible for maintaining it and fixing it. Whereas if they don't foreclose, then they're the first lien holder, but they don't have... You can't do anything to make them fix it. So it's one of those, it's in limbo, that everybody used to use the funding for dilapidated houses to tear down, but that no longer exists through over currently, so. So we're kind of in limbo on that particular property. But the neighbor who came in and was complaining about it, so I'll talk to Randy about it, so. That's all I have.
Randy?
I was just here about the interlocal. Nothing else?
Anybody else have anything?
I've had a couple of things from the park board. For contract positions, they need to fill out an application also with the town. Okay. And then we have, we wanted to make an amendment to the salary ordinance, but my number... What I had in my notes and what Mary had in her notes are different, so I'll bring it back next time. Anybody have any historical knowledge of a memorandum of understanding with the Little League or an agreement with Little League? Who takes care of what at the park?
Never seen what... We've talked about that before.
It predate me if there was one.
Yeah. There's just never been anything, and there should be.
And at one time, the baseball and softball board were responsible for taking care of the fields.
I, yeah. Where do you get that?
No, it was on the board.
They never have? I mean, it's hard going...
Well, when they were redone, yes, the board...
The store, really, they were the ones that took care of...
There's been a lot of issues and a lot of, like, repairs this year. We're looking at, like, commingling the concession stand, just using one concession stand for the pool in the park. So for an MOU, once, say, we come to an agreement with the Little League, would you drive that MOU?
Yeah, I can. You just need to tell me who's doing what.
Because we wanted to do it probably annually.
Or if you're meeting with them and you want me at the meeting, just let me know.
Yeah, okay.
Dan Gary and Mark Patlock.
That's been...
It's when the fields were redone. And so they wanted to take care of, because there was a huge investment in the...
Brick dust.
Brick dust. And they did the landscaping, and then they all aged out.
Twenty-plus years ago.
No.
I was on the board. I was president of the board when Bo was in second grade.
I was on it when they redid it, and it was...
That was...
That was little, so it's probably... It might have been twenty. You were one of them.
So the revenue that they were generating with their concession stand on their own, what'd they do with that? That was their...
They stopped the concession stand. They used to upkeep on things, but then I think it's also now they use for term of fees and things like that.
What's their intention to this, we were random as far as...
Which is, it's just clarification of who's responsible for what. Who's going to... You know, if the fence needs repaired, is the Little League going to pay for it or is the town going to pay for it? The park board. Does, you know, do we mow or do they mow?
I think now we mow. First, they mowed, and they weren't happy with the way the town was mowing it, so they took over the mowing.
That depends on who's on the...
Well...
Year to year. So Kim and I talked and think that maybe it'd be a good idea just to do it an annual MOU because this board changes, their board changes.
Yeah, that way it's discussed every year, whether new member, old member.
Well, and everybody's aware, because, I mean, we're reaching back pretty significantly to it. And so it's kind of just been up in the air, so.
Yeah, I gather whatever you guys need on that, just let me know what, who's doing what or when you want me to be somewhere, so.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I think that's all I have on the park board.
Anyone else?
You'd ask about gates at the park. You guys can pretty much do what you want there.
Do whatever, because so it's not... So we can do whatever. No, we don't need anything, don't... Okay, cool. All right. Doesn't, so it's just, that's considered like private property?
It's owned by the government, but, I mean, you guys regulate it. You guys can do what you want with it as far as that respect. It's not a public right of way, or public street, or alleyway, or things like that.
Perfect.
So you can restrict travel on it if you want to.
Okay.
I'd suggest posting it and running an ad or...
Right.
That it's going to be restricted. That way we don't need our burden there as far as liability loss.
Do they give the date of January yet?
I think between 29... Hang on. 24.
Zach had approached me at the park boards meeting, too, about getting some assistance and doing a few things over there with the private bucket truck, trimming some limbs and things. I told him we helped him out any way we could, just for them to get their stuff ready to go. But as far as keeping the infield and all that kind of stuff, I think that's kind of all I have. Some of the things that they don't have the capability of accessing, like changing light bulbs, I can't really do that for them. Well?
Nick, what's all the answer? Second.
On paper?
Aight.